I'd like to call to order the work session with the Economic Development Committee. It is Tuesday, May 17th, and the time is 7:05. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Hi, Pledge of Allegiance. Do you apply? Of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands on nation, on God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome. I know that we've waited a little bit for this date, so it's good to be here, all at the same table. And the agenda tonight is tax exemption and stabilization program policies, and then recommendations by the Economic Development Committee. And then if there's any other matters of concern to anyone, we'd like to have the discussion. So, this is a work session, and we have nobody in the audience, but I'm hoping for enriched dialogue about the economic development policy, the tax exemption that is now on the table. So, with that said, Larry, would you like to have any remarks?
As you -- I'm on now, right? All right. As you know, we worked for a couple of years on the initial Tax Stabilization Treaty and brought it to the council at their -- asked a couple of years ago, several years ago, I think now. And it really hadn't been used by the business public. And we had a work session with the planning board a couple of years ago. And members of the planning board that were new didn't even know it existed. And they kind of got on us, saying, "Look, we've had this for five or six years, nobody's really asked for it." You know, and so we did some investigating. We really weren't promoting it. The town really -- it was there, it was -- the ordinance was there, but really people didn't know about it. So, we kind of took that as a charge unto its own, and made the business community aware of it. And I guess two applications have come in. And since then, there seemed to be a need for some guidelines. And town staff prepared it, and you guys enacted the guidelines. And we really didn't have any input to that at that time. So, I expressed concern, and we've worked on it, and that's why we have what's in front of us tonight. And from there, I'll pass it on to my committee members so that they can -- it's a committee feeling.
I think that --
You gotta turn it on.
-- you folks, I believe, have gotten the revisions that we've recommended.
Me too.
And I think that, me personally, I think other committee members as well would like to have some feedback from you on what we've produced and your feeling on -- it's dramatically different from what was passed, so your feeling on how plausible it is that that would get accepted in any form.
I think as well, having met one of the folks who have submitted application and really understood or heard, or lack of better term, their difficulty in going through the process, and how, you know, as we saw it to be a prime example of someone who could, you know, go through that process and be deemed acceptable for that application, and, you know, to kind of clarify that process, and how it wasn't that such a business couldn't do that. So, it was a concern of ours, I think, in that respect.
I would make just general comment that the tax stabilization document is kind of what brought us here. But I think that there's a prevailing feeling amongst the EDC that the challenge of coming into this town as a new business, for any new business to expand, but then to come into this town, and not every other, not just this town, is very difficult. And we, as a community, who as elected officials, have to be part of the selling tool to help attract those types of companies and those types of opportunities. The tax stabilization scenario is an interesting tool for a company to look at expanding in the town, whether it's through a new relocation or an expansion. But I think this conversation may gravitate to, and I hope it does, to what we need to do as a town to attract these opportunities.
Thank you.
Do you have any thoughts? Do we know if we're down? Do we proceed, just to accept it, and then first, what are the questions raised, if we have thought of, make the guidelines more useful?
What I'm hoping here is if we can set up a process before we even begin and go through, and I think it would be helpful for the town council to understand why the thoughts behind eliminating or changing some verbiage in here. I know that there was an Economic Development Committee, and some of the town council members had attended. So, you know, the dialogue was listened to from town council being in the audience. So, if that's a process that we can all live with, we can get through this, and then maybe hear some of the thought process and engage in a dialogue through all of the changes. So, does that sound like a starting place? Okay. All right. So, everybody has a copy of the draft, the proposed revisions, in front of them. In the first part, first couple of sentences has been left in. And then the piece that was eliminated is because a program of this type is a community subsidy. I know that there was discussion at that meeting with the word subsidy, so I don't know if there's someone that would like to address that to better help the town council understand. Or does anyone want to respond to, you know, why this deletion was made? And then maybe we can go back and forth with the dialogue.
Well, the first thing that's glaring to me is that it was primarily associated with manufacturing and industrial operations. Didn't apply to all businesses. And we thought that all businesses should be eligible for the program, so that it didn't single out one or two types. And frankly, we thought that there'd be a lot more other kind of businesses that would be eligible for it, as opposed to manufacturing industrial, which there are very few in the town. So, we would have a tax treaty that very few people would be eligible for. I mean, you could put your head, your hat on the word primarily. However, somebody moving into town that was a service industry, that had 500 employees, or was looking to relocate, would see the manufacturing industrial and probably looked the other way. Didn't think it was applied to them. So, I think that's one thing.
And I think what the towns' thoughts were on that is that verbiage came from, you know, the ordinance itself. So, I don't know if the verbiage gets changed here, then there's other documents that also may have to parallel that. And I'm not sure that that's the case. So, if anybody from the town can jump in on helping us.
Well, I know that the original ordinance that was passed applied to all businesses. It said the word was commercial that was used. Right.
Okay. It just seemed like there was a little disconnect between the two, in terms of broad scale appeal, if you will. The original document, dated 22 Jan. '07, calls out commercial purposes and admission to manufacturing, whereas the 23 Feb. 11 document is, you know, since that is guidelines, is a lot more specific in terms of manufacturing industrial.
So, were there any town documents, Steve, that would, you know, other documents that use the verbiage that would need to be changed, manufacturing industrial, in order to match?
Are you talking about the verbiage on that which is in the italics?
I'm just on the first page here.
The original document meant to sound things in terms of, dated 22 Jan. 2007.
First paragraph is somewhat specific. It says, tail end of it, says, "In whole or in part, real and personal property used for manufacturing or commercial purposes, or to determine a stabilized amount of taxes to be paid, so on and so forth." But it specifically calls out manufacturing commercial. Okay? Now, commercial is sort of a large umbrella. Whereas in this document, the one with revisions that's on it, it is a little more specific, is somewhat significantly more specific, in that it talks about manufacturing and industrial operations. We think that there ought to be more flexibility in the verbiage, if you will, by using the word commercial. That's the reason for our changes, if you will. Maybe we could make it more generic, in the sense of why would you want to make it just manufacturing or industrial? And we would take the approach that we wanted on a broad-based economic stimulus policy across all annual business lines.
In fact, the two applications that you have are neither manufacturing or industrial. Number one.
Steve, do you mind, Jim?
Oh, no. I guess I agree with the EDC on that. Frankly, I'm happy to just use the word business. Commercial industrial is something that would be so rare that we would see in town here. I think business is broader categories you can get, and that's what we should be addressing here. I also never liked the word subsidy, and that really just pains me to even see that word having been used here. The, and going in that first paragraph again, which we're keeping, the general program focus is on major business expansions and relocations. I don't like the word major, because maybe we'll get down to a quarter million or less. Maybe that's the wrong definition of major, $250,000. And then this last sentence, consideration of that first paragraph, consideration shall be granted, so on and so forth. I appreciate going to this right now, because I think the EDC's worked hard on it. But also, too, you know, four years ago, when we passed the, in '07, and even at that time, I, and I'll almost apologize, because I didn't pay enough attention to it. I saw the words commercial and industrial, and at that time, we had the Palisades Mill, which was a real question. We had our Palisades study grouping put together. APC was still a question mark, with the buyout from the Europeans, Belgians, whoever bought them. And I was kind of panicked that we were going to have a huge problem, all of a sudden, on our doorstep, a 300,000-square-foot plant up in Kingston, and a quarter million square feet over here. So, we were certainly, I think, as a council at that time, we all were concerned. And I was looking at the big plant and equipment, and then, you know, stepped back and take a look here. Gee, maybe this ought to apply to a much broader scale of business. And realizing that this community is mainly a small business community, that's where I've, since that time, redirected myself, so I appreciate what the EDC has done here. And it's amazing, for those three or four years, that no one stepped forward. We had this on the books. I certainly know, as you know, there are a number of businesses in town that have put some serious money into their businesses, plant, and obviously, I guess we're not going to make this retroactive, but they certainly should have been, and would have been eligible. And I think we ought to capture what we can here with a reasonable scale of numbers before we get to each sentence here. I think we need to figure out dollars and cents, how to tie employment to investment. And as some of your numbers have shown here, try to make the terms three years, two years, three, four, five years maximum. Unless it's a multi-million dollar operation, maybe it's a 10-year write-off, and maybe we can get to a scale later. But I'm certainly, I haven't come full circle, I just didn't pay attention enough the first go-around, because I was concentrating on APC and Palisades.
There is news, now, right? It's sort of, you know, everyone, all, is getting, of this, this one, these guidelines. You know, you have all the answers, but you have to find, from that individual perspective, I think that rather than, you know, what's gone on in the past, you really need to start thinking about where are we going, because the game has changed. And really, much of it is based on finances. The money is not there. The federal government doesn't have, the state government doesn't have, the town. So, you need to start, you're likely, you're less worried about things, you, and you're more, you know, solutions. And talk cost is one percent. So, that's a lot where we're coming from. It's not to just say one way of thinking is right, one way of thinking is wrong. It's to say, we put our together, and we think that this is a broad stroke, if you will. It probably is going to be, but at the same time, it's a lot closer to where we probably want to go within the economic circumstances.
I can speak for myself, you know, on the town council as 1:05. In this economic difficult time that we are in, I think that, I know myself, I need to really look at things through a different lens as well. You know, and different things that come in front of the town council table, what I'm going to try to do is look at things through that economic development lens, to better the town here as well. So, I'm in agreement with different ways of looking at things. So, Steve, did you want to add?
I think some of the points that Jim made were the, some of the ideas I was going to put on the table, is that you really do need to go back and understand where we came from and where we got to, and what the policy was that was developed and that was adopted by the council before your reaction to it. The act that was passed in 2007 was passed because prior to that, we had a financial town meeting. And with the financial town meeting, tax stabilizations could be approved, negotiated by the council, and approved by the financial town meeting. When we lost that ability, because we changed the way we did business, and did away with the financial town meeting process, we then needed to have this ordinance in place to provide the council with the ability to make the overall decision. When we looked at the act, and Mike Orsillo drafted it really based on what was in the state law for other towns. I think Lincoln, Middletown, Richmond, all had the act back all the way to 2002. Same language was used for South Kingston. And I think at that point, it was looked at that this was supposed to be used to be able to compete with another community that was providing tax incentives to a business, and we wanted to be able to compete on an equal footing. I don't think it was ever envisioned at that time that it was supposed to serve as a means of providing any commercial expansion or renovation would qualify for a tax stabilization, whether it was three years, five years, or 10 years. The objective was that if the mill were to sell, and if there were an ability to get somebody to buy the mill that was going to do certain things, that were going to provide jobs for the community, that that's what the act was supposed to be for. I think that once the act was passed, it became really, because the ordinance is so amorphous, it does not have shape. It becomes a question of when, in November, we first heard on the first application being filed, and the first applicant meeting with the EDC in advance of any rules or regs being put together. My principal concern was, I don't want to put businesses through any type of expenses if, in fact, this program is not something that they should be participating in. That's when we began, at the staff level, after discussion with the council, to draft the policy. When we drafted the policy for the council's consideration, we were not looking that any building expansion of an existing business of over $25,000 would be eligible for some type of tax consideration. We were again looking at a much broader application, where it was going to be a major expansion of a facility, or it was going to be a business moving in where we had to compete against another town that may have incentives that they could provide that we couldn't. So, when we drafted this, the objective was to say, no one is getting a tax break unless there's community benefit. And it goes back to the point you two made. No one has the money anymore at the governmental level, and we've got to protect the tax levy that we have in place. So, at this point, you know, businesses make up about 10% of the overall tax base. This town has ensured that it would not go to the 150% tax rate on businesses, and as happens in surrounding communities, Naragansett charges whatever the residential rate is, 150% of that, so that the business pays a disproportionate share from what they do in South Kingston. We looked at that, and we said, that's the type of advantage that we're already providing to the businesses that are here, or businesses that are expanding here. This act should really be looking at the larger facility or larger expansion that was going to occur. That's when we began the drafting. And the other thing that was important in the drafting that I think has been suggested that needs to be removed, is the concept of the council being able, in the findings of fact, to be able to provide a tax stabilization agreement, that there's benefit that inurds to the benefit of the community itself. What is it that that is bringing? Is it bringing jobs, and is it bringing a guarantee of jobs? And that's what we tried to develop. I think that philosophically, there's two different poles sitting at this table right now. There's one group that's looking at it, saying, the act that's there could provide tax stabilization for any type of commercial or industrial expansion in the community, or relocation in the community. And I think that where this was originally developed, back in 2006 and 2007, was the idea of the large firm coming in that was going to be able to provide jobs, or that we were going to be able to protect jobs from leaving the community with an APC concern. So, I think that there's those two differences. So, what was developed and adopted by the council in advance of EDC looking at it, was one that looked at a very limited application as a tool that would be used for limited purposes, where there certainly was benefit that could be derived based on that business or industry being able to locate in the community. That's why in the reviews, we talked about the $5 million as the target for investment, but also said on the next sentence that projects of smaller sizes would be considered, as long as the burden of proof was there to show why, there was a demonstration of why we should be providing that type of a tax incentive. You know, when we look at going down to as low as $25,000, you know, if you took a 10-year deal on $25,000 in improvements, the overall tax bill on that $25,000 would be $3,884, assuming current year rate and a 2% escalator over a 10-year period. So, when you're talking about that, you're talking about providing, over a 10-year period, a stabilization where there would be tax credits of about $2,073. I don't see that in a business plan being a make or break for a business to be able to stay here, or to come here. When I look at $1 million on that same basis, taxes due, again, with the 2% escalator on the $14.19, would be total taxes of $155,000. Again, with a 10-year plan, you'd have about $82,000, $83,000 exempted, and $72,000 paid. So, at that point, you start to get into numbers where, on a monthly basis, the average is about $619 in tax credit that would be available, on the average, over the 120-month period that you have. You really need to get above that number before there really is a means of saying that this is making the difference between the building, business being able to stay here, or the business not staying here. If you assume that you're going to have $5 million or $10 million in growth a year, and then you're going to discount that by 50% over the first 10 years that's there, you've really downvalued the ratable growth within the tax rule. And this is where it gets into, if our levies don't go down, and our levies are escalating because of cost increases, what we're actually doing is taking a larger portion of the tax yield is coming from the residential base, because the residential base supports 84% of all the tax dollars that would come in. So, I think that's where the difference was. I don't think that, and I think that somewhere, the council and EDC need to decide on, is this program, because I think when I read it the way it's been drafted, or redrafted with the changes that you want, it almost appears as if it's a pass fail. If a business goes out and puts a $25,000 improvement, in terms of putting a new roof on or a new facade on, are they entitled to tax subsidy for that purpose? I don't think that's what the intention of the ordinance was in the first place. And so, what I was trying to draft with staff, and that I presented to the council, was to try to provide some type of a foundation, so that the business coming in isn't going to spend time trying to prove that they're entitled to a tax break, where we then irritate the business. But rather to be able to say, take a look at the procedures that we have in place, do you think you fit within that? Because the worst thing we could do is to have somebody run through this process, and then be told, no, we're not going to give you a tax break. It puts that into a bad situation for all parties involved. And it also, we need a policy so that I don't have the EDC saying one thing, and having the manager's office say something else. So, there needs to be that type of an understanding, you know. So, I think that's where the two differences are in terms of interpretation, as to how the committee is looking at it, versus how we were looking at it at the staff level, having worked with it back to 2007. Now, when we had the adoption hearing on, in 2007, Larry and Dick were both here, and they were supportive, and we were talking about the broader picture. We weren't talking about the smaller picture at the $25,000 level. So, I think maybe the $25,000 is a knee-jerk reaction to the $5 million figure, and it's probably someplace in between. But I think you need to look realistically at what the value of tax abatement would be on those smaller dollar amounts, in terms of how do they really fit into practice?
I think if our committee was involved in drafting officials, who have, we did a lot of the work, right, created, not not the right, but the different things, if we had, this would be done, and has been worked, but important. Steve, I don't think we disagree a lot with what you're saying. EDC's opinion rejected to change the balance between commercial and residential. Commercial pay for, pay for, it's percentages, as you define it. Maybe focus of our discussion, in fact, why we passed the $0.5,000, which is somewhat of a knee-jerk reaction, or a low bar, at the least, was what we were focusing on is economic activity, period, not the 2007 approach to protect APC, or to provide tools to support APC, or the mill. We were just trying to increase the tax base as a whole to... We were just trying to increase the tax base as a whole to conceivably allow that business to make a capital investment, taxable capital investment for the town.
Your perspective of 2007 was enlightening for us. I don't think I recall all of those reasons, but that's just because I wasn't focused on it. But, you know, we were here to help try to increase the tax base and to give those most likely companies that are already here an opportunity to make more investment and gain some level of benefit. I think what we have to be careful of, and where we certainly took, not offense, but had trouble with the document, is the likelihood of large investments occurring in this town. It just historically hasn't been done. We're not likely to compete for a business that will weigh on a tax basis to come to Naragansett, to come to Richmond, or come to South Kingston. So I think what we were trying to do was make a more welcoming, generic, if you will, opportunity for the tax base to rise by capex investment, by existing, or maybe even new tenants, or new owners.
I don't disagree at all with your kind of, your overview of it. I think that was what our focus and why we gravitated to low numbers and made it more generic. But what we didn't want, and I think we would all be very concerned if it went that way, is to create a document that these tenants think that they have opportunities, invest time, more importantly, legal fees and professional fees, which is a terrible scenario.
So we wanted to develop it.
Absolutely. Totally agree with that.
There's a new dynamic situation in Kansas. Someone came in, basically, and there's getting that application law, the law of guidance. So that's a best hope we should be in, understood. I think the duck tail on what Rob said, the revisions, the way we look at revising the guidelines, was to provide incentive, yes, to be competitive, but also provide incentive for business to do what's right for the community. Use your example, putting on a new roof inside. There are a couple of businesses in town, I'm sure you close to my, that we kind of like seeing inside. Whether or not it costs $25,000, the amount of tax rate itself, not a great, but it would just be one more arrow in the footpath, potentially incentivize someone to do the right thing, or maybe just where the case would be. Businesses need to put on a new roof. You have to put on a new roof. So that's a little bit of a situation.
Just use that to draw a distinction between incentivizing what's right for the town, and not necessarily providing any financial support for stuff that is more correct for the business than the town.
When we started to look at developing some, over the state, looking around, state around, various rules and guidelines, we see most communities that apply this, the generic and average statute, have done so, either through their financial community or, but generally, their experience was for larger deals, so to speak. Example, East Greenwich, where I used to work, some years back, they did several deals with Stanley Blastitch, and they also did deals with Cherry Center, but varied the ease of success over a period of time. When other communities like Westerly, which have been counted, and Westerly has been keeping their tax assessment, they don't have a specific minimum threshold, but they largely only consider that industrial, industrial park, and by their, they haven't really targeted the experience of what I have, not that targeted, general commercial, retail, not exclusive. I think Cranston would be a little bit of a...
Cranston's the exception to the rule.
They have a, they have a program.
Very active, huge. But we did look outside the state, a lot of, currently, behind the main, hard Texas, because, you know, research, some communities are very active, large, they have a very active program, and it's very specific criteria. So we tried to breathe out that it would be a fair, it's a prudent process, if we didn't have just a mere board, and so many loopholes open, and not, not necessarily have easy to use, you're right, so we tried to develop that as a starting point. We would make note that we had a whole six, seven policy, which we developed several years ago, and so amended at least to occasions that I record, as practice has indicated, we need to shift, so perhaps this would be a similar exercise, we find over aspects of the equator, so. Number one, we need some correct guidance. And number two, we just want to work together to produce whatever the right guidelines are, so.
Just...
As I said earlier, we don't have all the answers.
Just elaborate a little bit on what these two gentlemen have to say about how we got to where we are. I think this is what you want your EDC to be doing. There are other boards and commissions in town that have different charges, and, you know, let them fight for that. This, I think this is a perfect group that's, somewhere in the middle, I think, is where we're going to meet. But this is the kind of work you want being done, I think, by your EDC, if you, if you want an active economic climate in your town.
Bill?
I just want to give a little more perspective. I mean, we're going back to 2007, but I'll take it back four years earlier than that, to 2003, when, which is when we actually first had, started having discussions about doing this. It literally took us four years to get to the point of the ordinance being passed. And, and most of it was because a lot of us were pushing at it. We did meet with three different town councils about this. And finally, the third time, you know, with a lot of Vin's help, because Vin was the person, staff person working with us on that, we were able to enact the ordinance. You know, and again, it was based on what other communities had done in the past. But the one thing that we did know is that South Kingston was indeed very unique. You know, unlike Westerly, which, you're right, you know, their ordinance was based primarily on the industrial park. You know, other, Middletown, they had additional industrial land, other towns did as well. We don't. We knew right then and there, we don't have the large tract of lands that we're going to be able to bring in, you know, big, large industrial, manufacturing, large industrial industries. We knew that, you know, the best we can hope for is something of a small and medium-sized business, hopefully, with the ability of that small and medium-sized business to grow and become bigger, such as an APC, that started out in Coliseum's Mill, and grew to what it is today. There is some industries, another, unfortunately, they moved out of town. You know, the goal here was really to try and bring in new businesses, hopefully, maybe even starting off in the URI, the research market, that are a good number, but definitely starting in the laboratories. You know, the goal was to try to keep those businesses to stay here, try to expand in here, try to build and so forth. And I think that, you know, there is that potential. But the idea that, you know, this ordinance was going to be created with the idea that we're going to be bringing in a fidelity, or, or a large, you know, commercial, that there simply is not any land in this town to do that. We just simply, and no, and no large company would ever even consider coming to South Kingston based on that specific reason. So we always knew that this tax treaty that we were looking to do was going to be specific to small and medium-sized businesses with the idea that they can grow. So, I mean, that's, I think, probably the thing that made it most frustrating, is that when we saw these guidelines that came out, you know, you know, these guidelines are written specifically for a business that will never come here, or very unlikely would ever come here, because there's simply nowhere for them to go. So that really was the whole reason why we did, we asked to have the ordinance created, and it took a lot of work, and had to go through the general assembly and everything else, and it took a lot of work on our part for four years. So I think what you're seeing here is a lot of frustration on our part, because we feel that we've actually taken two steps backwards now. And the whole idea, the whole guidance here was never, what we have here is not what the goal here is, which is to develop and expand on smaller businesses. And that's where I think we are today. So, I mean, you know, Steve's saying that there's a, there's a difference in ideas. I would agree that there is a major difference, but that's the perspective that we're coming from, at least that's my perspective.
Is that the perspective from other EDC?
Yeah.
So that...
Absolutely. I mean, it's, it's, we're trying to use this as a sales tool for the existing base. We are what we are, and it's not just the land issues, it's, it's the affordable workforce that we can attract, those kind of companies, you know, the road system. I'm in this world every day, and I have a critical living, and try to track the companies out, and it is a very unique scenario. So we try to culture a document that would work for Main Street, work for the infield, that would take charge for us, would work for, potentially, a PC, in fact, after you got, if you can, if you could use, type of projects. And so I think that's the core of what we try to talk, who we try to talk to every day, whether it's these people own their own businesses in town, or, or are machine the business. We're here to try to support the small business of this town.
Larry, can I just go to Jim, and then to you, Larry? Or Jim, do you want to defer to Larry?
Please.
Okay.
One of our goals is to change the 15% commercial base to 20% or 25%. That's one of our charges.
Goals is to get it to 15, not now it's 10.
Whatever, Steve. I mean, that, that's...
Your number was goals. You said 86.
Get it industrial, and it's, it's taking the bottom as well.
And hopefully, you know, pertain to tangible properties to increase that. So, I mean, that, that's one of our charges from the town council in enacting this committee. So that is one of our goals. Another thing that has come up in the, the actual process of applying for it, it was originally designed to be very, very flexible. We wanted it to be able to be worked out behind closed doors with, with town staff, then come out to a public hearing, and if someone wanted 100% tax exemption the first year, and then pay from then on, that would be all right. Maybe that's what that particular applicant needed. Maybe somebody else was looking for tax breaks that would be enacted over 10 years, which is the norm if you look at, at other, other towns, like Wesley and North Kingston, that kind of thing. We wanted to make it flexible. I think that was wrong. I think we were wrong, and I was one of the architects of it, so, I mean, I'll, I'll take the hit, because I, I think that there were no guidelines for the, for the town staff to, to see, and, I think more now that the council should decide, if they're going to have a tax stabilization treaty, do you want it over three years? Do you want it over five years, or 10 years? And then, and then firm that up, that that's what it is. Right now, to be eligible for it, you have to ask the town manager prior to submitting anything to planning. All right? I think that that was wrong, again. All right? I think, in reality, it should be another checklist, a check-off item in the, in the planning process. So it doesn't have to be, the chicken doesn't have to come before the egg. And, and that, if it meets these guidelines, boom, 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 maybe A through F, then they get Y. And then, then the town manager doesn't have to be put into the awkward position of being behind closed doors, trying to read the applicant's mind of what they're looking for. I, I think we put Steve in a, in a terrible, flexible position, all right? And, and then, you know, he doesn't want to feel as though he's giving away the store. He, he, he doesn't want to offend the applicant. So, you know, I apologize to you, because...
Because that's my job.
But, but I think it's...
We don't mean to make things more difficult.
Right. And it should be part of the existing process. You know, is, is the fire alarm in? It goes to the communications department, and that gets checked, checked off. Does it meet this requirement, that requirement? And it should just be another one of those forms that they get when they, when they come to the planning department, and just automatically happen. And I think we need, if that's how you want to have it, I think that's the easiest one, now that we've gone through a couple. I think it should just be a smooth process, but you'd have to decide what kind of formula you'd use to, that you felt comfortable with. And I think, I'm a proponent of no more than five years, because if you look at the, the figures, that's half of what a tax treaty over 10 years costs a town. I'm not a proponent of giving away the store. I, I'm a proponent of incenting that person, whether they're new to town or existing. That's important to me, because I think a lot of times, the current people on Main Street, or wherever they are in town, you know, feel as though, well, why's the new guy get that? And I don't. So I, I think it's important that it pertains to everybody. Whatever the threshold is, whether, maybe $25,000 isn't right, maybe it should be $250,000, $100,000, I don't know. I think you need to have something that feels comfortable, and something that could possibly incent somebody to do something that they normally wouldn't do, especially in these times. All right? And, and, and go forward.
Okay. I'm just looking at the people that want to speak. We're going to go to Jim, and then to Polly, and then Carol.
As a first step, just thinking what the state does, can we agree, or would there be a disagreement that whatever modification we make of these, of this treaty, that we tie it to some employment goal? You know, I hate to have a number out there. I don't want 50% more. One person, to me, would be fine. But do we need to tie this to employment? I also agree with Larry, and I agree what was said earlier. I'm in the real estate business. Every commercial seller has to take back financing. Banks are non-existent for small business, absolutely non-existent. That's why I would go with a quicker depreciation, a three-year, because that helps that guy putting that building, all those costs up front. It helps him with that earlier write-off. And also, too, I can make a case to the taxpayers, because this is going to be new-assessed property that we do not have on the books now. So yes, the taxpayers won't get 100% the first year, maybe 100% minus a third, third, a third, for three years, on a three-year basis, but this is good for the town. So we're not hurting any of our taxpayers. We're not taking from the residential, we are adding to the base that gets calculated in the budgets down the road. So I, my only question is, do we tie it to some kind of a small employment goal? And the way I look at it, I can't imagine anybody building a $250,000, I take a look at the condos up on the railroad tracks there, 100 by 200 feet, $100 cost in there, $200,000. And some of those places have five, six, seven people working out of them, the ones, Rose's property up there. You know, that's good stuff. So $250,000 to me is kind of a threshold number that I would use, that I think makes sense, that I know some kind of a building can be put up. I know that's the early fabric here. And, and the shorter the depreciation schedule, the better, because, as I said, banks are not helping, and the folks need those write-offs earlier. But how do we tie it to employment, or should we not? I don't know if there's a consensus here at the table. I don't know if there's a consensus here at the table. That's, I'm happy with increased employment, but you go down to a couple of things you wrote off here. Fifty percent, uh, minimum ten, I mean, if you look down there, that, that, that's why this was, I'm glad you took that out. All I want is an increase, but I just didn't know if we should tie it to at least the most minimal increase of employment. So, I, I agree with the willingness statements up top, uh, but then I saw what was below there, that, uh, ten for a minimum for new, fifty percent for expansion. So, I didn't know what was fair on that. But should we tie it together with at least any amount of increased employment?
Personally, I don't think the town is, and, and, nor most towns, sophisticated enough to be able to manage the employee side. We looked at it really as just, um, property tax, uh, increase. It's a great byproduct to get the employees, uh, for us to be able to, to manage, uh... Are those ten guys on the books or ten employees on the books on a given, at a given time? I think it's harder, harder to manage than we can, can expect.
And I certainly understand that, but we'd have so few of these applications, I'd be happy to do it, it'd probably take me ten minutes. I, I mean, really, it'd be so easy to calculate, but, but I mean, this is what the state does to, you know, loan the big money, the shillings, the yardney in there, look at all the combinations they're getting. You know, employment's always attached to it.
Hi, is, we aren't trying to do the big deal, we are just trying to create small-town economic expansion.
And I understand, just trying to find where, where we all are.
Okay. Okay, we're going to stick to this topic and then when Polly, when we get onto a new topic, you're going to be speaking, so Bill?
I, I just wanted to, just to say, I mean, you know, we're talking small, medium-sized businesses here. You know, to run a small business, the stress of that is enormous. You know, and, and if, if I'm a small business person and I'm looking to take advantage of this benefit that the town is putting forth in hopes of expanding my business with the greater hope of then creating more jobs, if I know that I'm under a deadline, that I've got to create a job or I've got to create fifty, increase my workforce by fifty percent and, and, and I can't see the future next month, let alone next year, that would be a disincentive and I probably would just say, you know what, I'm going to forego this, I'm not going to continue this because I can't guarantee that I'm, I'm going to have that ability. I can't guarantee if I'm going to have the ability to pay my, my, my workers next month, following month, that type of thing. I, I, I think to, if you're, if you're talking about the shilling deal, you're talking about, you know, G-Tech and all that, that's one thing. And those multi-million dollar companies, but if you're talking small companies here where their, their gross receipts are less than a million dollars, I would never want to put, you know, that type of burden on a small business.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to Polly's? Okay, Polly?
Uh, Larry, when you men, is that alright?
That's good, that's, yeah.
Uh, when you mentioned the checklist, I was interested, what do you think, we obviously all want this to move in, we're all after whatever, you know, you get within the town. What do you think would be the best thing to do to make the process work for small businesses? And what would be the most alluring thing? I look around, many successful business people here at the table. What is the, um, thing that's going to make a difference? I'm amazed that no one even applied for this.
They didn't know it existed.
But they, alright, but why not?
It needs promotion.
It was never really, uh, put before the public in any way of expansion. It's not on the website anywhere, uh, it just, it, it was there in a folder.
Yeah, well, to go back to your idea Larry, do you have the idea where, um, you, you started with the checklist, then where would you go to promote this?
Well, uh, promoting it is fairly simple, to let the public know that this, this exists.
And what would you put in it that would be the most attractive thing?
It's, it's, what benchmarks do you want the applicant to hit? Do you want it to be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars? Do you want it to, uh, apply to all businesses or just selective businesses? Do you want it to be existing businesses or just ones that moved into town or both? Do you want it, uh, to be tied to an increase in employment? You can refer to the opinions on that, uh, the opinions also, uh, are similar online, uh, but we're going to pay, which is also in here, had to be, well, then, such and such percent of, uh, average wage. I mean, I, I want to, uh, break out, in, in this economy, a ten-dollar-a-night job is just as good as a twenty-dollar-a-night job. It's a job. So, so I, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn with the, with the committee saying that, you know, we don't, we don't think it should, uh, be tied to any state minimums of, of, of rate. And do you want to apply to mixed use? The original proposal said mixed use had to be packed out. So, uh, on the, the sonno, uh, application, where those residential, uh, of, of law and commercial law, is the whole thing eligible? Or does somebody have to come up with, um, what's, if, 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 if the investment is a million dollars, what is, uh, the residential portion, is it a hundred thousand, a hundred-and-fifty thousand worth of? Who's going to come up with that? I think that we're, at, at least that's what I think, is that the town wants to, uh, give an incentive for mixed use. Let's have people working on the first floor, living on the second floor, give more vitality to Main Street or whatever. I mean, I, I, I don't think you want to give a disincentive to have, uh, residential on the seventh or third floor. And, and so I think that that's a good thing, I think infill is a good thing. So, if, you just need to agree amongst yourselves, uh, and we kind of showed you where we were on this thing, uh, with what we crossed law and what we kept, alright? Because we did keep some, I mean, we did, I mean, granted, this is a lot, we understand that, alright? And we're not saying it's all right, but take this as a working document and, and have that...
It's hard to size it.
Come back to it. Have, have, have a serious input from that and then, then, then proceed. And I, I think, but, I mean, Steve, your opinion, I'm, I'm having a part of the, the long process as long as those benchmarks are there and everybody agrees about the benchmarks are, so that it's, it's, it's automatic. Just like, uh, it's handing out a test, boom, checked off. You know, there's a fire alarm system, checked off. It would be submitted by, to it. That, that would have to be changed, but I did, I, I, I think implementing this tax treaty...
I think that these systems works by getting back applications to the taxpayer.
And I would say about that, I believe...
Phil, what do you mean by, by that? You either accept, you either get it or you don't?
To, to condition, remember that difference. Rather than, again, I go back to the section that says that there needs to be a demonstration of the value of the given. Now, Jake's point, new development occurs, newer head has a, it worked at the development, so it was first off to get it solved off. I may be partial, uh, development in commercial, often investors have, is where the businesses are expanding because they need, because they, their business might also, whether or not there's a tax incentive or not, that investment is going to be made in that property over here. So, this, it's not a case for every extension that occurs with the tax subsidy, wouldn't occur without tax subsidy. And I didn't want to address the usual obligations for microservices and the way it was drafted in the, uh, the... It is, well, to determine what the value is of the construction, in a, uh, multiple's, well. You can look at the rental structure, it's going to be accomplished by adding that unit there. You can look at the square footage of, uh, as a percentage of the total construction, that's simple enough. The reason why I would strongly recommend that the mixed use be excluded from any type of consideration is because there are costs associated with residential development that's not there with commercial development. If we have a unit that's constructed and in the building and we have two kids in the school system, then we have a major cost to the community that's coming out of a piece of property that's being subsidized. That's the reason why we looked at that. I would have no difficulty suggesting that if it was an affordable housing unit that is certified through the state process for the period, that you could provide integration of some type of consideration with it. But if it's a nonchalant residential lease on that, uh, on that structure, it should be discounted from what is supposed to be the commercial or industrial incentive for, uh, for investment unit. That's the reason why we look at that. The same reason why we looked at the, uh, the tangible property.
As you pointed out, your scheme around with the three-year, you either apply here or ten here, you're pointing to say discount, five here or ten, and then on the, on ten years, who's helping you with the business? If you want to start off the first year, we'll be able to provide, uh, discount on that. The discount is already available, it's hard to, it may never get below ten percent, but you're talking about, you know, ten percent on a hundred and nine thousand dollars piece of work, that's ten thousand dollar value. So, you left, you know, a value of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand per person to pay. I mean, uh, we didn't see that as being something that should be integrated into the schedule as well.
Steve, but if it's a three-year, uh, treaty with a ten-year depreciation and it's truly new, new equipment, new investment, there's a net gain to the town.
I think you can't be, other than the fact that I'm saying is if you could, your assessment value is going to be down for those years. If you're talking about a business that has major expansion to equipment, you know, options. And with, you know, you're talking about things that cost forty, fifty thousand dollars, most of those aren't going to be scheduled. Most of those are going to be ten years from now, they're scheduled, uh, so, I mean, they, it's going in the opposite direction from the tax treaty itself.
Do, do I understand though that the town's depreciation schedule for taxable purposes is ten years? Correct, then it gets down to ten percent and stays flat?
I think that you could see, uh, on the law that there's, uh, that there's short equipment and long-term equipment. And each one has to be scheduled, uh, I would imagine most of the equipment that you have would, uh, certainly, uh, be, be long-scheduled.
Ten.
I, just in reaction to the mixed use comment, I think our attitude or, you know, our economy, that was, it was, uh, you know, reacting to the current conditions and creating ways for businesses to finance and construction laws. You get things up and it's, things are tight and this is that kind of, I think, at some level, certain developers are going to, are going to rely on, you know, taking that mortgage or, uh, rent, if you will, to, to pay off their loans and to give to all loans. I think that was our attitude, to not discount any mixed use or, as, as incentive to prevent to, to, to collect money, um, to, to pay off their kids' construction loans or anything else and so forth.
But Steve, that shows on the business plan, uh, there's a number of business plans that I review with different people that have asked me tables. When you look at those types of things, you see where the, where they're going to be, oh my God. You can reflect in that.
That's one of the things as far as working individually with weeks, with, with these applications. A lot of times you need to understand where the people need the money. Do they need it in the first year or do they need it over the three years or do they need it over the ten years? Because that makes or breaks, uh, and what you're looking at really is, is the cash flow that they have. And, you know, so you can take those things into consideration, but my point is that I think that the council would have criticism if they're subsidizing residential which does have multiple bedrooms where there could in fact be major costs associated with servicing that piece of property as a result of it. That's the only point, and, and a lot of what we're looking at too is that we're looking at it saying, if we've got to come up with a finding of fact to show that there's not just benefits to the business, but benefits to the community, that we can't have detractors within there that people are going to be able to hop on and say, why are you doing it that way?
I think this goes down to your face, I'm a person I have thought through with that itself just a lot. If there's not an incentive to put a tax stabilization package for the affordable housing and it creates that double incentive, then maybe it's win-win, but I, I don't think we have a, personally, the, uh...
Yeah, this sort of kind of just actually makes, because that's all arguing for you.
Yeah, but I mean, in, in terms of mixed use, we're really talking about this Main Street, you know? The, the, Main, Main Street is what, uh, the goal there is to get more people living on the second and in some cases on the third floors, so that there's more, there's, you know, more vitality on Main Street, so that, you know, maybe you'll have more than just a brick league and, and, and a pair of pizza that'll, that'll open on Main Street. If we have businesses actually staying almost seven o'clock at night, uh, as a way to, to, to increase their, their sale, their, their... Again, we're trying to be flexible here because we're realizing that with the economy the way it is today, you need to be flexible, you need to be creative, you need to provide more incentive for businesses to, to expand and to, and to, you know, run their businesses based on what the market is asking them to do. So, I mean, you know, I, I think the real concern here is that we're going to bring in, you know, a hundred or a hundred-and-fifty new students from out of, out of town, I, I just don't see that happening on Main Street. I mean, maybe we might bring in another dozen as well, I, I just don't see that happening. I, I, I'll make, only whatever you want, I, I don't think that's, that, that's a realistic concern.
Bill, with the, um, excuse me Kath, I'm just gonna, um, and then I'm gonna come back to you. The, the, with the pension system next year and the financial state that it's going to put the schools in, it is a strong concern, a very, very strong concern with, um, putting the budget together for the school department and all the work that they have done. So, I'm going to, um, go to Kathy and then I'm going to move on to Carol. She's just going to respond to that and then you're gonna...
You, you should be sitting here while we're doing the budgets and then we have to factor in, um, you know, we have a broken down to apartments to, because we've had more apartment use, housing use, you know, the, you know, fact is that we have to tie in for the impact fees, whether it's even recreational, not even talking about the school, uh, portion of it. It's, when you're talking educating a child for over fifteen thousand dollars, twelve, that's a significant number, you can do the math.
Fifteen thousand.
That's a lot of money, so, you know, look at from our perspective of what we'll be able, not just because you're just trying to, you know, change this. That's what we look at, we just spent three months looking at doing our budget.
I don't think it's a personal goal, I, I get that, you know, but, you know, I think you have to look at the entire picture here and, and, you know, what are the benefits, what are the, what are the non-benefits here? And the benefits are that in addition to, you know, expanding more activity on Main Street, which I think is the goal of everything here, is to expand this and something to maintain and grow value, and make it something more than... And the benefits are that in addition to, you know, expanding more activity on Main Street, which I think is the goal of everybody here, is to expand this and something to maintain and grow value, and make it something more than it is today, which I think is fully, fully all one. You know, and then you have other, uh, options as well, that maybe you can also, you know, increase the number of, uh, affordable housing companies down. I think that those are all good options, you know? Again, I mean, there's always a concern on the South County Council that you're going to bring in a whole bunch of new school age children, and that is not happening either. So, I mean, we can't predict the future.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to, um, Carol.
Uh, as to that though, I just wanted to say that, um, it doesn't, even if you have a mixed use, it doesn't preclude the investor or commercial person coming in. From applying for the exemption and weighing financially was, was in, is her best interest, I mean, the seller get income from the apartments. Uh, if they don't get the tax exemption, it still may be quite beneficial in her scheme of things to.
Do it that way. So, I, I, I don't really see that as knocking someone out of the park for asking for the exemption, and I, I really don't see it as a big problem. I, I see it a problem for, you know, affording to put the school, the kids through the school system, that's where it's expensive, but I don't think it would, uh, really knock somebody out of the whole application process for the exemption. But, uh, besides that, I think, just looking at your whole document, I, I think obviously we think 25,000, uh, many of us think that is not enough. Um, I, I think with 25,000 you could put on a new roof, you're not necessarily going to increase the tax base or increase the value of your property. Uh, you're just gonna, you know, fix your, fix things that need to be fixing. I mean, in this day and age, 25,000 doesn't take you very far. Um, so I think we have to raise that and like I think Finn said, somewhere around the equator or maybe even lower. Uh, because I, I do agree with you on some of the small and medium-sized businesses, but I do think there has to be an employment component, or at least the idea that the business is expanding. It should bring in, uh, new business, how, you know, new employment for, uh, people here. Um, and if you increase the amount to a sizable amount, I, I think Jim was saying 250, uh, 250,000 or more, chances are you're going to increase your business. I mean, why would you put that kind of money into it? And you're going to have to hire new employees. So, as you go higher in numbers, it automatically takes care of many of our concerns. Um, and then the other thing I was thinking, uh, we talked three years, five years, 10 years, that should, in my mind, that should coordinate with how much the investment is. So if it's 250, you only get a year or so. If it's, you know, 5 million, then you're eligible for the 10-year, uh, program, uh, depending on all the other checklist aspects that we've been discussing. But, uh, I think it's going to be very tough to come up with a checklist, because as we're all talking here, there's so many different scenarios and, uh, each one is going to have to be, uh, individualized, looked at it by a case-by-case basis and, uh, see, you know, what the reality of the situation is. Because people come in with big ideas that may never come to fruition, and that's another issue that we'd have to.
Checklist is getting misunderstood. The checklist objective was that, um, as they come in and apply for a capital expenditure or a human investment, that as they would have to sign off on a building perimeter, which has various stipulations, this would be on that checklist. You would create.
So you see who created and, and this next part who created what the, um, political percentages.
We don't wanna, and, and I'll go into this at another time, but we want to make this as simple for the prospect and as simple for the town. So we're trying to take out a bunch of the, the, uh, the different, um, subjective analysis. Uh, but the checklist is just, hey, did you apply for this?
So you mean to get you to the first step, to the application for the exemption? So you've got to meet the, the initial check.
Something that is forgotten by that particular candidate.
But that wouldn't automatically mean you're, you're gonna get it, you know?
No, I think it would then go through the litmus test, it's determined.
So you, you eat, you meet the minimum criteria is basically what you're saying, so you can apply.
It doesn't even mean that you meet the minimum criteria, it just means that you are now.
Aware of this and it's in the.
Part of the promotion.
If you go in and you, what's this? Because as it stands, it's not expected.
Right, exactly.
There's really no way you don't have to mitigate this. Like your respective applicant. Whereas if there is a checklist and it's on there, what's that? So it's, it's not, you qualify and therefore you get, it's.
It, it's, it's you've met the checklist, so now you can apply and see where you go from there. But I think that's what you're saying, right?
No, it's just wish you'd let it.
No, it is that this is a, uh, source or an opportunity that's available to you now, let's say that you meet the, the.
Okay.
The other thing that I would, I would, I would comment as to, to your, uh, your comments, and, and Steve maybe can guide me through this. The intent is here not just to spend 250,000 or 25,000, whatever the, the number is, has to be taxable, um, value, taxable.
Right.
Increase. And just to put a roof on that, I mean, that, that costs 25,000 dollars, you'll say it costs 250,000.
250,000, that doesn't increase the value by 250,000.
No.
So that shouldn't necessarily be, right, a, a, um, to fit into this, it has to change the value of that property on the factual, on the factual.
By a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're.
100, because that's all, it's just a, a net gain to the town. Very important, because other, we're not here to, to soften the load of just a normal repair or something like that. This has to change.
Well, I, I don't think that's clear in how you, uh, outlined it in this one.
Not be clear, it, it references that it has to be new taxable investment. That term may not be as tight as.
Yeah, right. That, that would be a good addition to it, I think.
The, the other thing that, uh, we get struck out that, that, uh, that was in it, was that, uh, what, it's called, one of the businesses, uh, national change in franchise operations. They're held for, typically franchises are owned by local people, all right? Uh, I don't want to, uh, put a Wendy's in, uh, somewhere in the top. Uh, why wouldn't, I, the other, if, uh, a million dollars, two million dollars, whatever it is, of, of the Wendy's, that's not there, it's not taxable property, not built property for that, that building. Why would you exclude an individual that just happens to be a franchisee? I mean, that, that, that's, uh, the, the same on.
And I, I don't think, uh, the John Pinkes of the world or whoever, um, should be ineligible for it. No, we, that's, that's why we, that's why we struck.
That, that was only one, only a couple of strikeouts after the third page. And, uh, and the other thing that hasn't really been touched on that was the strikeout, uh, from us, and one like that, was that, uh, first page, uh, Tommy at the end said, "For all applications, the council will also review the potential tax, tax exemption stabilization group may have on an existing symbol of business concern in the community." I don't think that, that's wrong. It's, what is this applicant looking, how is it, it's expanding, why are they coming into this town? Uh, whether I, I have a Lundermat and they want to put a Lundermat, I mean, it's irrelevant what I feel. I mean, competition is good, and so that's why that was struck, struck out. Because, you know, how that relates to an existing business in town should be irrelevant to the applicant.
You thought, what is your, uh, what is your, what is your, what is your, what is your, uh?
So, so, uh, uh, I want to bring a Wendy's in because it's a 3,000, I shouldn't be eligible for it? I, I, I don't, I just don't think, I, I think that's unfair.
Larry, just to be devil's advocate though, I mean, say you, uh, take that Kentucky Fried Chicken and turn it into a Wendy's, should you be able to do it for that? Because you're really just changing the outside of the building to fit your new, that's not a new business. So that's what, I mean, if we were going to change that, it would have to be a new franchise in a new place. Because to just refurbish another like McDonald's or something and turn it into a Wendy's, I'm not sure that, that would really fit this, because it would just be the same business in a new name, almost.
I'm concerned how you define taxable back in my agreement, and I would refer that to Steve. If that also shows that it's taxable income to the, or taxable property, then I would argue that it, that it, that it.
No.
But I don't know how that works in, uh.
Oh, so what, what do I, the difference between the such, you, you, or some of the, you know?
Correct. So, so that, that scenario, if, if, if the number is 250,000 and, and the tax assessment says, well, now, uh, with all the renovations he, he put in, it's now assessed at, uh, a million dollars more than our location.
But some franchises, you just really need to change the facade a little bit and not really expand the value of the business, right? Right. That's right.
You missed the, the top one on the, uh, on the third page.
Polly, is that your question? I think we're in agreement with that. I wrote down, down that, that's one thing we, we all agree upon that.
Yeah, why is it not?
Yeah, no, I don't. That, that was, uh, that draft.
That's not happening either.
That's not supposed to be, yeah, a little bit of, uh, uh.
Seeing if we were reading it okay.
I wrote down that, that is one of the one things we agreed upon here.
And the 25,000.
I'm not, okay, right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not.
It was done by one person, but it was read by 10.
That's right, that's right. So that goes more like a little plus.
Do we need?
Anything that's in the italics is out of the Enabling Act, which the committee had endorsed. So any changes that you've got suggested in the italics is contrary to what the Enabling Act says. So, I mean, I think it's.
Italics for you.
Whether the word manufacturing or commercial equals business.
Well, what I'm saying to you is that we're dealing with ordinance and we're dealing with an Enabling Act that uses that for a beta.
I think we're just layman people who don't quite, you know, understand all the things that are applied and then have to get challenged by. So I think what we're trying to bring here is the spirit of what we're trying to support.
I'm trying to suggest.
We agree.
You're closer than what you think based on where, where certain things are. But, I mean, those are the types of changes, I, unless you're changing the ordinance and changing the enabling authority itself, it wouldn't be reflective of each other. But I really don't think that the changes, even in the policy, would make any difference if you called it a business first manufacturing or commercial. What I'm saying is that that wasn't license that we were taking in terms of definition, but rather reflective of, of a cut and paste.
Steve, is that an administrative change? Does that have to go through committee, corporate finance, uh? I think that, uh, Arsilah could give you an opinion that the ordinance itself, uh, would have been advised to reflect those changes without it having any change in what the intent of the legislation was. But that's not my place to call.
I think we're all in agreement, we want to keep it as simple as possible. So I just said, we made a lot of changes with our ready down here, and we really are, one of our first, we need your guidance to help me understand, are they, and where we're going. As we started talking, it's kind of clear that we're, uh, the age of the track is not different, and it isn't a need. Times can be a, on this track, or analogy, we're talking apples and apples here. Just got to figure out those kind of, thousands, five hundreds, somewhere in between. Natalie Partson, Bob, and I, I think, should be cupid, should be more, I mean, I don't know, but I, that there are some folks who we talk to that say, yeah, this, this user, there are specialists initially, that we may get this. That's what we, we're not trying to dictate what it should be.
As I suggested earlier, the concern is that if the 250 is yielding a tax of less than $8,000, that you're looking for discounting, and it's over a three-year period rather than a 10-year period, you're talking, uh, you know, the time it's going to take for that person to go through the process, and the value that is, is accomplished with it, uh, is going to be a trade-off. That's why we had the large number in there with the ability, if somebody thought that it was worthwhile, that they could apply for a smaller project. You know, one of the things that is key is that the 5 million was put as a target, but at the same time, it said, projects smaller than that would be eligible for consideration. But the person needs to, uh, beware that, that, that they go forward at their own peril. And that, that's what the, the intention was. Maybe the five should be four, maybe it should be three, I'm not sure what that number is the council would be comfortable with. But the target number of the five was in there for that purpose. If you change the, change the wording so that it's an increased investment assessment value, that has a different connotation than a $5 million investment period. So I, I think that there's ways of looking at that, but I, I still think that you need to have a high enough number there, uh, to, uh, be able to have it so you have legitimate applications rather than cosmetic improvements to a facility that are, uh, looking for the, uh, for the tax relief. And again, I'm trying to protect the tax base. Uh, you know, every time we raise the tax, there's Larry comes in and complains.
Cause I, I'm maybe misunderstanding something here. What we're trying to do is create something that, um, while the applicant may have to, um, reach for some professional sources to help compile for you, is largely, um, streamlined in a process as it's presented to you, not that is, and maybe I don't.
That's what we tried to accomplish with the application. The application was to say, here's all the information we're going to need to give the value of the proposal.
That's how we thought we were streamlining the process itself, so that we don't have a business coming in and saying, well, what is it you're going to need from us? You know, what, what is it that you're going to, uh, look at in terms of saying whether we appear to be eligible or not, that you're willing to support to go forward to the council? That's why we prepared the application, uh, in a manner which we did, that talked about what, uh, council's existing policy deals with, uh, with labor, what the labor is now, what the labor would be as a result of the improvements, all of that information's in the application. That way, when I sit down with an applicant, based on the process that's there now, I've got the information where, for all intents and purposes, you've almost got a business plan as to what the person's doing. And at that point, you know, they can black out how much they're talking at a tax debate, and then you're back into the number. But at least you understand what it is that, that they believe that they're entitled to. That's what we were trying to do in terms of, uh, speeding up the application process. But again, we're working with an ordinance that says that that has to be done in advance of the, uh, the filing of the development plan review. That's what the ordinance says, you know?
I, I think that, uh, you really, uh, the compensation aspect, uh, doesn't.
Let me play devil's advocate, if somebody comes in and advances development plan review and is told, we think that you're entitled to X number of dollars, it may have influence on how they want to do the development plan before the planning board, based on what their cost in our pocket's going to be. So, there's good and there's bad, as far as, I mean, from your perspective, you're saying, let them go through development plan review and that way they can jump on the table.
And a fool playing, so everything is, it's not, I'm not a company, it's not a company.
What I'm saying to you is that if they're coming in in advance and the council says, yeah, we're willing to give these, uh, these folks a, uh, yeah, we're willing to give these, these folks a, you know, a twelve thousand dollar a year or a thousand dollars a month less, they know better when they go into the development plan review, how much they've got to pay for landscaping or those types of things, the things that are going to be negotiated across the table with the planning board. So there's, there's two sides to that, Larry.
I agree, but if, if they know it's a school, if I file an application, right now, basically they filed an application for the planning board, as soon as that's it, they're a school, they're out of check. And right now, the public is beginning, that doesn't exist. So if there's somebody down the lane in the pocket that will definitely say, no, I can't take that, because you need to know about this, read this, give that back to your client or whatever, and, and maybe you want to hold back, before you submit that, because you have to do this, be willing to be eligible for it. Well, I don't think that happens.
Again, I'm working within the structure of the ordinance as it exists. You know, if we need to amend the ordinance and there's justification or the council agrees that they would, you know, but there's, there still needs to be some gate point at which the person's before the council.
Or it's on that, or they may go on that. So it's just, so, so, so that if they're gonna, it's going to be more than X number of dollars of additional taxable property, and if it does this, and if it does that, and, and backed off which you, so whatever you do, and it qualifies, then they get why, then the council wouldn't have to be involved. But, but, but I know the ordinance would have to be changed to do that. I would say that, but that might be a better working way of doing it, to save staff time and effort and, and managing of it and everything else, it's just like the building permit. You, you have to do this, you have to do that, you have to do this, and then you get killed.
I guess I would say to you, I wouldn't advocate to the council that they provide a guarantee where it's, you're either in or you're out until you had a dozen of these go through, because I think you're going to see unique situations where you're going to. But that's what I'm saying. If you just look at it and say, yep, you hit this step, this step, and this step, you're in, then that really takes away from the council what their vested responsibility is for due diligence to hold a public hearing and determine whether or not, after public comment is made, whether or not they're going to exercise authority for the tax. So you can't, the way the ordinance is structured and the Enabling Ordinance, it has to go through a, a negotiative process.
But, but, I mean, if, if the council chose to make it and the staff agreed that would be smoother, if it was a cookie cutter, then we have the public, whether, and, and get the feedback, whether they want it, the council wants to hold that cookie cutter and they're pulling that. I mean, then, then I feel a prejudice over, oh, I don't like Sammy's, Sammy or whatever, and not, not group him versus Jimmy over there. It's totally against for everybody. I mean, I, I was part of the architect, I'm making it flexible, you know, but it's not working as, as flexible. Feedback that we got from the applicants was that it was very uncomfortable, then we say, I haven't done it. I mean, it would, it would be, it was, it was not a pleasant experience, and that's not how I designed it, and I don't think you did it anyway, you know? So maybe it's, it's broken before we even started using it.
I think you were put in some difficult situation, some of the houses that say, here, we're just a taxpayer, or we're saying, what do you do, what do you go? I think the guidelines were essential. I think that there's been enough discussion around these guidelines, that everyone believes that they need to be here, it's just a question, okay, what are the numbers, what are some semantics, how do we make this go within this code? What I'm after was, is I understand if, if you apply, it was prior to submitting your application, you're eligible for it. You don't know about it, that you're not going to apply it. If you want to submit your application, you're going to find out whether it's actually really on, then you're going to second, wait, that process is passed on by, and then all are going to be eligible for it. So I think what needs to be hammered out is, okay, how do we make people aware? If no one says their question, we don't, if there's no part of caution, you folks are going to have to defend whatever it is you decided. There are going to be some people out there that'll give many good reasons why your decisions are wrong. And if you have as much ammunition as possible to defend yourself.
I think once you get the procedure in place, that the council's comfortable with, and at that point, what we do is we will have that document available in the planning department in advance of the person filing for, for the development plan review. Now, should we have done that going back to two thousand and seven, again, hindsight's always going to be twenty twenty. Should staff have developed it? Yes. Should Economic Development Committee have asked for it? Yes.
Here we are.
All I'm saying to you is, is that, as, as you had pointed out earlier, where do we go from here? But I still think the biggest question's going to be the idea of uniform eligibility or whether the council's comfortable with that. Because that, that, that's really, I think, one of the, the things on the table, other than the, than the investment value, which is still, still, we're not at Vin's equator.
Vin. Can I just, can I also let Vin speak to me once we address some of this too?
I wanted to build upon what Jeff was saying, but it sounds like, at least to me, it sounds like three things are in place, obviously. Number one is a means to inform about, about the availability of this program. You could take a variety of forms, the town's website, notice in the building official's office, notice, you know, typically when someone's going to do development plan review stuff, they'll go to the, the building official first, and then if they meet certain thresholds, then, then they kick to planning, and then, you know, after Jeff makes them good and happy, they come to see us. But, you know, but, you know, if, if that was the policy direction of the town to make that more available in terms of informing, I think that would be good. The second thing is, it seems like the discussion tonight about policy and what, what the, what modification may be considered, that the council building would be comfortable with. And I guess the third part, I think, is some of the things that have been discussed, kick you back to either the Enabling Statute possibly, or the town's ordinance, you know, specifically, that might be, for example, mixed use, you know, there, there could be a, a challenge on that if a mixed use project was, was subsidized, excuse the term, but subsidized in whole or in part, incentivized or whatever, you know, some, a critic could say, well, wait a minute, that's not manufacturing or commercial, that's, you know, that's got a residential component. And then, you know, the point Steve raised is about costs associated with residential use, so, you know, that's kind of, if I had tried to boil this down a little bit, way to inform, policy considerations, and then maybe some ordinance, either at the state or a lo, a local, a local level, so.
Can I just toss one other thing that I made a note of a little about that? All kinds of affordable housing, I don't know the number, but assuming the town is short, the percentage.
Yes.
I don't know how this would work, just floating in this, this, these years, but maybe this is a way, the intention to generate is an appropriate affordable housing. You know, and I don't know.
I mean, that's something that has been.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Because Infill has been a buzzword at the planning, you know, everybody raises the idea of mixed use as well. I mean, the town, a couple of years back, passed a new, new use codes for commercial downtown area to, you know, better allow that, you know, previous, um, construction. That's, that's an interesting concept, certainly for me, I have a planning perspective.
But remember, when we dealt with the issue of expanding the uses along Main Street, we had severe negative reaction from the people that are residential in those areas, because they looked at it and they said, we don't want our neighborhood to become a commercial zone. So there was, there was a strong pushback at that time. And a lot of people say, oh gee, well, let's just expand out two more streets. But, you know, we've had a lot of people that have come in and said, you know, we've spent a lot of money, our houses may not, you know, be, you know, on the ocean, but they're our house, it's our neighborhood, our kids that are playing there, we don't want another business that's going to be able to locate there. So they don't want the street expansions off of Main Street, which was one of the areas that, that had been looked at. And I mean, that was a rocky meeting that we had that night. So, you know, the, the, I think the main problem the council always runs into is that they have to balance all of the community interests rather than the specific advocacy that comes from any one group. I mean, if we were sitting here with the Affordable Housing Group, they would want the tax instead of not for commercial business, but they would want the incentives to be able to have housing built with no taxing on it as a means of being able to meet that. The Conservation Commission would then come in the following night and tell, we don't want any development because we want that to be all open space. So that, that's really what the council is.
So we just have to be louder.
Bill?
Thanks, Bill.
Oh, Smith, I was going to ask you, I mean, if, if a couple of years ago, and yeah, if you were back, that, that, I mean, you changed your use codes, so when it's very more residential development along Main Street, doesn't prohibiting residential development as a mixed use as part of a property contradict that?
I would say that it may not fit within the context of the Enabling Statute. So if that, if that's a, it may be a contradiction, but it may be a contradiction that has to get, if, if that's the direction the town ultimately decides to go in, it may be a contradiction you have to address, uh, Smith Hill as a, as a first step.
It also hasn't defined.
Remember, there's a lot of. You know, there's a lot of people on Main Street that own businesses that don't want the residential mixed use, because they are afraid that it will take away space that will be converted from an existing commercial purpose into a residential purpose. And we've heard loud and clear from, from, you know, there are a lot of people that don't own property on Main Street that say, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we had people living above each of the stores? And we got a lot of businesses that say, I don't want to take, you know, we, we want to make sure that there's as much business activity on Main Street, and we don't want to see the second floor turn into a, a residential zone.
But doesn't reality come into play? I mean, you know, are, are those, are those, you know, is the background in some cases whether for being used for more commercial activity, or is, is it just vacant?
Sometimes the building and fire codes make that transition difficult as well, even to go back to what once was there.
Well, this isn't going to fit.
That's right.
If you do, then okay, you could have that discussion, you know, but, but you lost one size fits a match.
That's right.
Where, you know, it's not going to be viable for them to get financing unless they have to have a residential company. Again, you got to listen to the reality of the situation at this time. You know, I mean, you can't go to a bank now and just get.
Get a loan for a million dollars and, and without any type of, you know, source of income for it. I mean, you know, some, you have to sometimes be very creative as to how you're going to put these development plans together. Otherwise, no bank's going to be willing to give you that money unless they know that there is practically a guarantee that you're going to get paid back.
From a development perspective, this is not something that will really change the viability of the development, in my opinion. What it will do is get possibly the developer to the table to be interested to make an investment. It doesn't preclude the financing. But I would kind of gravitate that discussion to something maybe more global, and that is, what a developer or what a, a business person is looking for when making one of these investments is a clear, definable, simplified development process. And that is, my friends up at State EDC actually use this word when I'm trying to work with a particular tenant now, have to show them a little love. And that showing a little love goes a long ways to being able to attract existing tenant basis and new tenant basis. So that's kind of the theme that I'm trying to really push forward with this. They put a couple extra dollars in there on their side of the ledger. I don't think we're giving dollars away over the town, but we can simplify this process and simplify the development map to, um, perspective of businesses, we have a better chance of securing confidence, securing confidence in that. Simple is that I wait, when I go into a development, how much brain damage I'm going to go through in trying to get just the simple requests that I have. And there are towns that I welcome, and there are towns that I would not pursue. We're just trying to be a welcoming map.
Do we need to have further dialogue on the tangible properties?
I would just make the comment that I think it's something that's unique. The dentist, as an example, has a significant capital investment to that. I would also make the statement that I think we don't understand all that, or I don't understand all the tax implications, and that's why Steve and his team could, could probably better assess that. I think it's an important and significant capital investment for some people, and maybe less for others. I think it's something that should be considered, I don't think we know all of it, I don't know all of it, the different aspects of, well, I think, including that. I think, if that's an example, if you're going to expand your business, things that that is difficult as a statement, you're going to do it. There are going to be a job or two added, and there are going to be good wage jobs. There is going to be more taxable space and, and equipment. It's going to enhance the look of the neighborhood in many ways, get parking off Main Street into a parking lot as opposed to in front of a house. It does a lot of the things that we'd like to have done. And the only thing that kind of hangs in the back of my mind is, okay, he can do it here, or maybe he can go to a, an adjacent community and do it. You'd like to think, okay, he's, he's going to do it. But for the amount of money involved, and money's a relative term, some people have more than others, a fellow might just decide, you know what, I'm going to do this, but I'm going to do it down the road, so we lose out completely. And, you know, that's something that has to be weighed and considered also, as I'm sure it is, but if something like this can incentivize the person and.
Al, I think specifically to your personal or tangible property, I think if you came up with a formula that said, it's depreciable over ten years, but we're going to excuse the tax for a limited number of years, the rest of that ten years, you're getting a depreciable asset, but you, it's, it's new money, it's new taxable property. So I think it's, it's net more money to the town. If you, if your feeling is that they were going to do it anyway, there's a loss. There's so many ways you can look at it, and that's why I would defer it back to, to Steve. And, I mean, you could, you could give him a credit, but they have to pay it back after, you know, a ten-year period, they got to pay it back after, you know, the final seven years or something like that. I mean, it really comes down to Steve's point, each business plan has a different set of, of, of hit points that they, they may need some small dollars upfront to make it, make it happen, but, um, so many different specifics. that they, they may need some small dollars upfront to make it, make it happen, but, um, so many different specifics.
Does any, um, town council member have any further clarification on any of the changes that you would like to discuss? Any, Carol?
I just had one thing in my notes, and I don't know if this makes sense, but, um, should we treat businesses different? Like, um, I know in this document, if somebody's moving out of town or somewhere else to enable jobs with them versus somebody new coming in, should we treat it the same way? And I'm wondering if, if that's under the same criteria, like, you know, moving out, moving in, brand new coming in, or somebody who's leaving because of whatever problem they, um, I'm not really sure, but... I know it's disgusting here somewhat, but I'm not really sure. But if you move out, I guess you go to another state where the tax, you have a better tax plan, or...
I think the only viable businesses that we lose is where there isn't sufficient space for them to expand in the community. Carousel Industries was a classic example of that. Uh, it was a case where they wanted the, uh, property so that they could, uh, and, and then what you find is that if they can find a piece of property which is reasonably priced, that can accommodate their needs, it's a bottom line decision to make. Uh, so, I, I, I don't think we've lost a lot of businesses to other locations. I think we've had shifts. And I think as the economy has changed, we've seen even movements out of, uh, the Commons going back to Main Street or to, uh, Dale Collier Corner, uh, because of the, uh, the rent, uh, disparities that are there. So, but, I mean, you may see, see the movements there, but I don't think you've really seen a lot that's moving out of town.
I know that the, since the documents, some of that, uh, to, to get the tax, that somebody can come move out of town.
Well, it just said that they were...
To town, uh...
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, if we should figure those out, uh...
I would, I would comment that, in line with Steve, I don't think people are occupying space in, in South Kingston that the taxes are so driven to their bottom line success or to their, um... You said, again, reasons for that. You said that.
Or, or their detriment. Or to their detriment. Um, you know, once again, we're just looking, and I think I made reference to this at a, at a previous get-together. We're just trying to find some tools that can be in the holster to attract people, and it...
I think on the, on the retention side, uh, if you make the number two million dollars as opposed to two hundred and fifty thousand, two numbers, all right?
That's what I was talking about.
Then, uh, an applicant that's going to do a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition, uh, while he can go to a neighboring town and build a newer facility, and then move his existing, uh, equipment that is currently depreciated but is on the tax rolls right now, and we're getting taxes on that, and those jobs are in town, uh, I, I think that makes somebody eligible that might make an investment in his existing property and stay in town as opposed to, "Well, somebody's not going to do two million dollars, so I'll go to, uh, the next town and spend two million dollars and, and get it there." That, then you're not going to, and you'll never know who you lost until you've lost them. And you might have lost some that you don't know about.
You may also have the person who tells you, "I may move to the other town," and has no intention of moving to the other town.
Well, I mean, you're, you're absolutely right, Steve. You're absolutely right.
They have somebody that looks at the other town...
Depends on how good you play poker. Are, are you going to bluff with the two aces in the hole?
What we're trying to do is get them to spend the extra, whatever it is, quarter million or half million dollars that goes on the books. That's really what drives this, not the new person coming in. It's the local Main Street guy who says, you know, "It's worth me putting in a quarter million dollars, and yes, I'm going to get a little bit of a token of appreciation, a little love from the town." And, and, and thus this, the town wins.
And, as Steve said, the quarter of a million dollar one doesn't cost the town a lot of money. I mean, he thinks it doesn't even incent them to do it. It needs to be bigger dollars. And, and I think, I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I think that little amount of money means just as much to a little guy. It's a lot of money to a little guy as opposed to the big dollars to the big corporations. You know?
Okay, is there item number three on the agenda, other matters of mutual interest and concerns?
I've got, uh, two quick ones.
Okay.
Um, we, we toured the mill, uh, Palisades Mill, uh, at our last meeting, and we, we met with the owner of the mill and his largest tenant. Uh, and that largest tenant, uh, they're, they're, they're trying to, uh, renew the lease and, and double in size, which would bring higher, more higher paying jobs in the town. Well, I think that's a plus. But one of the things that, uh, he needs help on was that he came to Town Hall many years ago, ma- ma- I, I would say two years or more ago, when he was in his infancy, and, uh, was having a hard time getting, uh, he, he, they do, they renovate and, and soup up motorcycles, for lack of a better word. I'm sure I'm not describing it as the owner would like me to do, but, uh, and he was looking to get a motorcycle license.
Dealer's license.
Dealer's license.
Dealer's license.
Right. And, um...
Not, however, for the purpose of reselling motorcycles, uh, retail purposes.
Right.
But for, um, more of an internal...
He would like to test drive the bikes that he accessorized.
He provides these motorcycles from the manufacturer. Let's say BMW provides him with a motorcycle that you and I might spend eighteen thousand, or they give him a break and he spends it. Then he puts four or five thousand dollars' worth of the aftermarket equipment that he manufactures and sells on this bike, so that now his investment is pushing twenty thousand dollars. Brand new bike, and he uses it around the country for demonstration purposes to show, "Here's what I make, here's what it looks like on the finished product." When all is said and done, he's sitting there with twenty thousand dollars' worth of two-wheeled investment that he has to sell as a used motorcycle. He's going to have to eat probably five thousand dollars right off the bat there. Now, if he does that a dozen times or more, because his business grows, he's going to lose more through the course of the year, that gets to be a pretty good sized li- amount of money. He's not looking to be like Ray Zee up in North Kingston, where you've got, like, a line of motorcycles out in front of your business. He, he wants the ability to be able to take these bikes that he's used for demo purposes and turn around and sell them, and get back at least as much as he's got in there. That's...
At the same token, uh, while Je- Je-
Is it zoning, or...
No, use co- use codes.
Inauguration.
And, and, uh, what's allowed in the zone, and also, uh, the state regulations versus the town regulations weren't really jiving. I'm not privy to the exact thing. I'm just bringing it to, to your attention. Uh, I, I, I'll tell you, it's, it goes back far enough that Jeff O'Hara wasn't the building official. All right? And, 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 um, I think we need to get him back to talk to the town and, and that kind of thing. I, I know by allowing him to have what he needed, that gets him the state dealer license. There's no restrictions, that it could be a Ray Zee. He's not, that's not what he wants to do with it, but he understands that there's no limited state license. So, I think the town at the time was concerned that it would be, but we're talking twenty, twenty jobs that are over forty thousand dollars a year, and he's looking to seriously expand that. Uh, it's a, it's, it, it, it could be another APC in the same, in the same mill, which would, I, I'd hate to see it. I know he, they're, the, the current mill owner is negotiating with him. This might get him over the top if they can resolve this issue, because if he goes somewhere else, he's not going to have that issue.
Larry, um, you know, I was in, privy to discussions with the owners of, uh, Twisted Throttle at the time, and I think one of the, if there was a problem, it was the fact that their business model, like, as Jeff was describing, didn't quite fit a wholesale, online, uh, you know, seller of, uh, custom motorcycle accessories for. And we had a number of discussions, and then they just kind of ended, you know, because we were trying to think of, actually, we were trying to think of vehicles and use codes that may accommodate the use at the mill. But, um, it, you know, if, I don't think there's an unwillingness to, to consider or discuss it in greater detail, but, you know, you know, we, we didn't pursue them after they decided they didn't, you know, they, they didn't want to, you know, keep...
I, I think now it, it's time to, and, and, and could really help that a- aspect of town and, and the tenant and everything else. There was also, uh, one other tenant that would like to go in there. Um, but again, use codes, uh, there apparently in this town is not a doggy daycare use code. And, and, uh, so the tenant couldn't, couldn't rent the space because the closest thing that the town could get for doggy daycare was, um, uh, cattle and, and horses and...
Cattle, cattle.
No, well, no, but li- livestock, ho- uh, hovering livestock or something like that. And, and it didn't, it didn't match. And, and so, why I'm bringing both issues up is that those were two little things, uh, that could generate significant economic impact to the town, and that's our charge. And, and both is use code driven, and the, this, this committee, for over a year, worked on use codes, and we submitted some suggestions to the planning board with the comp plan revision aspect, because they had asked us to. And, uh, we haven't heard anything back, and it's really on, not on a, on a front burner at all. And, and, uh, is, w- we, we made suggestions so that we could discuss them, and we didn't hear anything for months. So, then in January of this year, we sent another memo from our committee to their committee asking them, "Are they planning on looking at them, and can we have some dialogue and maybe a work session?" And, uh, we haven't had a response from the planning board in five months to that.
It has been too, you know, well, I'm not trying to set up a conflict between...
No, I, I, I know.
We have to understand the perspectives. The planning board's major task in front of them now is the comprehensive plan update, and they, you know, the EDC did have input, which has been incorporated into the draft of the economic development element. For example, there's a, a sug- there's a, a policy objective in there talking about marketing of the, of the town's tax treaty program, which came as a suggestion.
Right.
We did have two work sessions in the last two years with the EDC and the planning board. Now, maybe at the end of it, everybody's, um, conversations or desires weren't, you know, satisfied a hundred percent, but I think some of this stuff did stick. I mean, the planning board, you know, I mean, everything can't happen as quickly as everybody would like to see it happen because of other contingencies and obligations that are pending. I just, you know, I don't think, you know, there's been a, a hundred percent receptiveness to what's been said, but there hasn't been a rejection either, Larry. I, you know, I just, you know, want to say that in behalf of the planning board who...
Have acknowledged them.
Yeah. Well, I mean, through the staff, there's been discussions about that, that a lot, where evalu- there's been evaluations. A lot of the use code stuff was merely saying, put in our, uh, put in, but our legal counsel tells us if you go from a N in the use code, say, it's not permitted, to a special use permit, our legal counsel said you should have specific criteria developed for those special use permits, which entails a whole, a whole lot more work and...
But we don't have them for any of the other Ss that are currently on the book.
The more modern Ss on the books, we do. The, the, the ones from antiquity, I would agree, we don't. The legal counsel's saying that going forward, if you're going to have a special use permit as a, a use consideration, there should be specific criteria associated with it, and that's consistent with state enabling that's changed it over time. I, it's, you know, I'm, I'm, the long and short of it is that, you know, I don't, you know, the planning board's not here tonight to, to express their views, so if I may presume to speak on their behalf a little bit, well, that's what I'm doing, so...
All, all, the, the reason why we did it was currently, if it is, if there's an N and not an S, or if there's a, an S instead of a Y, somebody that's looking to come into town or, or, or to relocate into town, takes, it takes an extra year and probably ten to twenty thousand dollars of, of investment to change that N to an S, or an S to a Y, or to qualify for an S. And we're trying to speed up and encourage economic development if they were reviewed and some of them changed, so that maybe they were relevant for today's economy in, in, in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. Because they, I don't think they are relevant now.
Thank you for pointing that out, because here's an ongoing...
It's all I was doing.
Serious jobs in, in something that we need to address as, as soon as possible.
The best advice, Larry, is let's get the gentleman into separate planning, moving in and out of the town.
Okay.
But can I just point out, I mean, this is, this is just one example. I mean, what Larry's trying to say is that it's the use codes that need to be updated. They need to be re- reevaluated and, and relooked at, because what may have worked twenty years ago is certainly not going to work in today's environment. And, you know, right now, we have a brand new owner of the Palisades Mill. And he's a young man, he's got great ideas, but right now, he's being hampered by a lot of, you know, use codes that perhaps are completely outdated at this point. You know, that should be priority number one for this town. We need to encourage him to expand his business, and if it means allowing him to have a doggy daycare or allowing his existing tenants to have more flexibility so they can expand, maybe become another APC or a Carousel Industries, we ought to be embracing that. We ought to be really encouraging that, because that's going to be an economic engine. I mean, the bigger those businesses in that mill become, and the more active they become, the more economic development's going to provide for all the outline businesses.
I think anybody disagrees, and I think what it comes down to is, you know, there is a movement around. No owner needs to do his review as to the things that he likes to do. And you can't, you remember, the town spent, uh, a simple amount of time looking at the mill zoning in the first place, to look at the use codes in conjunction with the prior one to make sure that the use code that we're there, for them to be able to either use themselves or itself.
I was on the committee to...
Because the new person that comes in that owns that mill and sees other use codes, we're wanting, uh, looking forward to being able to sit down with that gentleman and find out what it is that, uh, he believes is necessary to promote a better business model. So, I, I don't think anybody disagrees with what you're saying, but I think that what we need to understand for that gentleman is what are the items that he wishes to have, and how to know in the first place to discover, give to the planning department, so that he can present that to the, uh, to the planning board. I think at the same time, this committee can be involved in terms of, once we get the list of those items that they feel are appropriate to be given device, we need to be able to pick and see position on that. Because, remember, the use code is just a simple matter of how, it, it's, the planning board has to recommend a change, and the council has to approve it.
Correct.
And we have to have the, so there is a time for this to...
That's right.
Of, of major importance is to get from the person that is responsible for the property and owns the property as to what it is that they want. If it's a case where we need to go to him and say, "I, whenever you are prepared to sit down with us, we're ready to, uh, sit down with you to understand what the zoning restrictions are that you need, uh, reviewed," but we haven't heard that directly at this point. But, you know, we're more than ready to do that. And if you want to act, you gotta take care of getting it, uh, also, there's time for the locals to follow us up.
And, and that's, and that's good, Steve, for, for us, the spot on ones. But I think, I don't know when the last time they were reviewed townwide. And so that each individual owner of properties don't have to come in and, and spend the, the, the year and ten grand for their particular... and spend the year and 10 grand for their particular thing. I think that there needs to be a review to come up to today's world.
And I think that what's ongoing now is locating the comp plan. And then at that point, it would be when the zoning ordinance and compliance would be reached on the comp.
Right.
But understand, zoning is probably the most difficult ordinance that we have because for every proposed change, there's three people that have a different opinion as to how that proposal could be expressed.
Right.
So, I mean, it takes a lot of...
A lot of dialogue to be able to get those changes made. And, you know, you've got to convince the planning board and you've got to convince the council. But, you know, I think the first step is to find out where are the issues? And then we deal with those first, it's a triage methodology. Because you're not going to be able to look at a sterile zoning ordinance and look at that use code page and be able to pick up everything that every business in town thinks needs to be changed that surrounding other zones are not going to be feeling appropriate.
I agree with everything you've said.
That's a close.
(laughing). No, that's not, that's not true. You and I agree most of the time. But we were asked to do that, to review the use codes. We didn't go out and do it on our own. We were asked to. And then we spent a year or more on that. And we were asked to review all the residential land in this town for possible rezoning to commercial property. And we spent over a year of this committee's time in addition on that. And neither, not, there's been nothing. And so, speaking on behalf of the committee, to net it out, they have a lot more better things to do with their time. And we'll go to the Muse every Thursday night, first of every Thursday night, if we just wanted to have a social gathering. We thought we were doing what we were asked to do and feel as though we've wasted a lot of our time. And nobody wants to feel that way. And that's all I'm saying. I'm not knocking anything. I'm just saying how, and maybe I shouldn't be the one saying it. Maybe I should let every one of them say, but that's how they feel.
That's why we hired you to chair this.
Well, I think, can you stop me if I want to...
Ron.
I'm actually looking at this. The time has come to review the use codes. Okay? Somebody's got to do it. Everybody's busy, guess what? Got to go. As far as rezoning, various pieces of property in town, we don't have many that really appeal to the kind of stuff that people that have some people in this industry.
Oh, you have some, and the zoning on those needs to be taken. Someone needs to take a look at that. And those first steps need to be taken. I mean, the Ss are on here in red. Are all the Ss going to be yet, the Ys, or what are they going to be? Who knows? That's not for us to say, but it is for somebody to start taking a look at. I think that's pretty much where we're coming at this point.
I don't disagree with you that there's always a need for that type of constant review. I just think it's a question of, you've given the input on the, I think, those 12 sites that you had proposed for possible consideration for rezoning with the planning board. They've got that, they've taken under advisement. I think the problem is that they've taken under advisement for a period of time that you think is far in excess of what is necessary. And, but I do know that you've also had two meetings with the planning board on the issue. I think what we need to do is to see if we can get an update from the planning board as to what the status of those two proposals are. And again, they may, it may be a case that they don't agree with most of what you've proposed based on what they see for land use planning.
That's okay, that's okay.
But at least they should give you an answer.
Would you like to...
Does staff now work on a document? And then we have another work session in months to agree on it before we go into session? I don't know how you want to follow up from now because we're sitting here now waiting for our next charge, but don't want to start anything that nobody's interested in.
What I see happening, and obviously I'm one of five, Larry, we need to look at the future steps in the process to deal with this. We're going to have a conversation, it'll be on our agenda. And I think if we break this down into certain components and then have the dialogue back to the table with relooking at this document that we've, you know, had a face-to-face and listened to what the Economic Development Committee has said, and it may take a couple of meetings to do that at the town council table, but we will keep you informed. We definitely appreciate the rich dialogue and your time here at the table and time serving on the Economic Development Committee. This is a change of the times, and I think that looking at what's coming down the pike, maybe two years with the Research Technology Park with URI, I'm hoping that we do finalize plans and put things in place because this is an opportunity to embrace that as this comes down the line as well. I appreciate the rich dialogue that took place here tonight, and I think there's a better understanding here at the table with exchanging ideas and you better understanding what some of the challenges that we face as town council members. And I know I'm leaving tonight as well as understanding, better understanding some of your thoughts and feelings based on, you know, this document. So, you know, that's, if any other town council would like to speak. So that's the way I see it. If there is a recommendation, I think if we're going to break it down into chunks and work on this, and Steve, if that's, if you want to add two cents here, does that seem like a process that will work? Include the staff?
Take a look at the document. Again, I think a lot of the decision points that the council needs to make based on what you've heard tonight.
At this, yeah, at this time, I do have to open this to any kind of comment from the audience because it is a public work session. Are there any further comments here at the table from town council Economic Development Committee members? Jim, staff?
I don't think we'll lose any customers here. I would certainly be in favor, obviously, of the two applicants already. As far as I'm concerned, the starting date was maybe first of this year, so I don't want anyone to be discouraged if it takes us another few months to get this through. The other thing that Larry brought up, which is really disconcerting to me, somebody like Twisted Throttle, their request, existing business, their request should not have to require site plans, site review, you name it. What they need is the ability to be able to get that license. And this has to follow a more simple route than the doggy daycare, which may be a real zoning issue, noise, how many dogs you walk, lots of zoning meetings. But in terms of what Twisted Throttle needs, that should be something that we could, I would like to think, can move more administratively on. Maybe it's impossible, but, you know...
And staff doesn't know, I mean, this is something we just found out, and I'm just passing it along as being an advocate for business.
But I just hate to go through engineering site plans that have nothing to do with what this poor man needs to get on with a business plan to put more people to work.
I just want to also include staff, if there's any comments from our staff. Okay, are we ready to adjourn? Okay?
Thank you.
Public work session is adjourned.